Walsenburg, Colorado. City. Right in front of the town hall. Hello. Thank you. Hello, y'all, where's them?
No, I don't care. No, it's nice and dirty.
So, there we are. What's up, Angie? Good to see you. Appreciate the thumbs up, guys. So, there's a protest. We're gonna cover that, and then we're gonna cover the city meeting following it. How's audio video? You good? Probably check the guys' arm in touch right there. Might get a little flatter. So, you see that big banner? By our eyes. What's up, bro? Good to see ya. Uh, so they're protesting behind me as well. We'll walk down there in a little bit. So, we have some protest going on in front of the town hall. Some going on down by the highway. Sorta windy. Little storm coming in. Space minor. Oh, no, it's that guy. ICE. A little bit of ICE protest. This is, uh, they got the town hall meeting going on here. There's more folks down here by the highway. There's a lot more traffic down here, so they're getting some interaction. It's not a whole lot of traffic here, but this is where the meeting happens. So... Protest in multiple areas. Can you see them down there? Let me see. Some down there. I think they were dividing up different corners. So, Trump and ICE protest, I would say. That's what we're dealing with here. I'm not part of the protest, I'm just documenting it. So... What's up, guys? What's up, people? Uh, it's Walsenburg. Walsenburg, Colorado. Right there. Walsenburg, Colorado. And yeah, they're split up into groups. Is that my high? Then we can't cover all the groups at once. So, we are just covering this one for the second video. They've got the doors locked, so I'm gonna get in there. They should come out. The doors are locked. Mine are locked, but... Everybody's gathered. Everybody's gathered out front waiting to get in. But... They say... The doors are locked.
It's never been locked before.
Well, yes, it has. It has been.
I've been here at 5:30 before and gone in and said it.
I know. And it's been at 5:30 before. It's part of that.
Well, they know that we're out here.
That's alright.
No, I'm just saying, one of the open doors.
Okay, Stacy.
That's all it is.
Okay.
That's all it is.
Stacy Decker's given me the rules of city hall doors.
So, I haven't locked out.
Decker has them. Got all the answers. Make us gross killer glasses. What?
Locked up. So... They know there's just people out here waiting to get in. So...
Um, so, was she pissed or what? Maybe.
All we gotta do is get a picture of her right in front of the city hall sign. Can we do that? L.A.? Adam, can I?
Let's, uh, take a little walk. See, let me see. Get a test. Nice little picture. Alright. Alright. Alright, since the doors are locked, we'll go ahead and take a walk down to this group over here. Take off. Shit, thumbs up, guys. Guys, we got a couple signs down here. Flag. I'm on traffic. Yeah, see Big Far out there, bro? Be safe. Hoods, probably.
Did you catch that, TJ?
Not a lot of traffic in this little town, guys. It's not. So, these guys are out here doing their best. Can you see their signs? Good. Oh, God. Well, shit. Don't say we're open down here yet, guys. Try to get good seats. There you go. So... The meeting's gonna be starting here shortly, I understand.
Smell you if you got 'em.
Before you get stuck in that shitbox, huh? They unlocked the doors, we're heading in a second, guys. Hey. Does it look like I care? They got a sign on the door that says you can't record in that building, guys.
This is a public.
Does it look like I care?
Yeah. This is a public building.
No, you don't. I can tell just by looking at you, you don't care.
I don't.
That's why we like you, man.
Yeah.
That's a public building.
I don't think they give a damn.
Yeah, it was a public building. I believe you're allowed to move where it's rest, come inside. It's a dress.
I did, bro. I did.
Fucking yelling shit at us. Breaks down immediately. Right in the middle of the damn highway.
I was gonna hammer whip that shit.
That's right. Which way? There you go. Shouldn't we didn't notice? Alright. We're gonna get the best seat in the house and shit, right? So... Get my seat. So... Trying to get me a good spot here.
Okay. So, there you have it. So, there you have it. It hasn't been advertised from your work, from your help. They're not gonna allow you guys to have cameras in here.
That's the chief of police's. Well, it seems like it's one of those things where you gotta... We don't need it.
It's up to the chief, I think.
No, no, we don't need it if you can't.
I know.
Do we have to sign that? If you're gonna see?
Oh, they can talk.
Share it out, guys. We can't record anything, I guess. Our government officials can't be recorded. It's kinda weird, 'cause if you look... They're recording. And they just like to discriminate. I'm not discriminating on them. I'm not to the right or nothing. So... Found the mayor there. This is all... The police chief says no recording. I'm not sure which law that is, but...
Was this for the Russian? No.
In here in a media capacity, guys, documenting these folks right here. Their comments, man.
Hey, hey. I guess someone has to turn back here. Can somebody store your spot? Yeah, you. Hi, sweetie. Oh, that's okay. I might have to use your... Oh, cool.
Take note of the camera. John Denver, takes note of the camera. Nothing said to him. So, he just...
You better chair from the corner.
He given the newspaper permission to sit in front of me with their camera. But I can't have my camera, guys. That's a camera right there. Right? That's a camera. My camera's a problem, I suppose. It is camera related. And as soon as you walk in, it says you're being recorded. Six thousand views this morning, this morning, this morning.
Hella.
It's documented. Six thousand views.
Dude, like, mine, internet.
How many people in there?
Turns out mine went out, yours is still going on, like...
That's the police chief right there. And this is, uh, Walsenburg. Uh, world view. It's the police chief. There's a lot of people signing up to talk. I'll give you a scan of the room. It's a full house. Document that, guys. It's all we wanna do. What's up, fam? Party on video, good, guys? Thanks for thumbs up. We're starting in a second. And we'll be right here. Anybody? We filled the... Filled the house by bringing in some more chairs, in case we need them. It's a full house.
I got you. Are you gonna do the front?
Yeah. Hey, there's a spot right here. I don't buy lunch.
You're a good dinner.
Oh, keep the safe distance. I see it. She said I don't buy lunch. Did you say I don't?
Want a soft one?
Tiny ones. They're much worse.
Oh, man, I forgot about that option.
It's getting full. It is getting full. I'll give you guys one more span. You guys can also join, uh...
Yeah, if you'd like to call the media July fifteenth order, roll call please. Uh, let's see, Ricky Jennings. Don Martinez?
Here.
Fred Ecker? Nick Beethel? Robert Stafford? Veronica May? Harry Vazani?
Veronica's online and is here.
Guys, here too. Can you say here Veronica?
Having trouble with your phone.
Okay, wait till she's here. That counter is...
Okay. All right, we stand to the police allegiance, please.
Dan Donson.
Our pleaded allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a motion by Nick Beethel? Second by Don Martinez, all in favor? Close. Harry, now motion Gary. Uh, don't accept agenda denied, that's a motion. And motion by Nick Beethel? Second by Don Martinez, all in favor? Close. Harry, now motion Gary. Minister, ready to staff reports. Mr. Skidwell, are you online?
Yes.
Okay, you have anything to add to your report?
I do not.
Okay, so you available for questions?
Yes.
Any questions on, uh, add, may I ask your report?
So Gary, this is Veronica. Um, I do have some questions, but I'd like to wait and I'll just ask them during comment time.
Okay.
Because it's too hard for me to do it on my way there. Thank you.
During the council comment time?
Yes.
Okay, now we're fine. Anybody else? Uh, move on to public works. Mr. Harriman, you got anything to add to yours?
Just, just one thing more.
Okay. You gotta come up here soon, here.
I'm coming. So, so the only thing that I added due to all the circumstances going on is to add emergency tornado flood, flood and sirens protocol. Which Rick and I worked on as an aid in a package. Uh, I believe that we just need to implement and, uh, get who's going to pull the trigger for us. So as far as, I think we'll test the sirens tomorrow and see if it's in full operation. I don't believe it's been accessed for people, so let's go ahead and fire it.
Be nice to the left, right, no one's pulling out.
Yeah, and then we can figure out what our distance coverage is and then I'll get together with the chief, I talked to him, he'll test someone on three that somebody needs to be there for this watch. So you're all fine with that. We'll go ahead and proceed with that.
I have no problem with the chief.
Any questions?
They're, they're here like twenty-four seven.
Yeah, yeah.
I have no, nothing. Anybody else have anything?
Yep.
Uh, the only question in the public works, uh, city police, Mr. Chief Donelli, you have anything to add to your report?
I don't think.
Any questions, chief? Yes. Uh, we're off to citizens' comments. We're limited to three minutes apiece. First one, please, you pull out. Ron, move.
Oh, your honor, I think I, that's the top of the second page. I think there's a few people before that.
Second page? Okay, thank you, sir. And I guess, I don't know which page is which, but I'm gonna start with Dave Decker.
City Council, Dave Decker, DCK. Mr. Mayor, bless your heart. In the past, we've heard from several families and neighbors and folks out of town about the potential reaping of the poor profit.
It's hard to hear.
That's okay.
We can't hear you in the back either.
Go ahead and put that up there.
Your public comments and recent news reports were frankly disappointing. Words matter. As the leader of this, or state, which is one of those first parties, they also reflect on us. Let's be clear. Immigrants have built, defended, saved this country from the very beginning.
Still very, very difficult to hear. I don't know what's going on with you guys' mics tonight, but you usually hear pretty good.
Is it on?
Yeah, it's on.
It's not loaded up.
Well, Stacy, we can barely hear you in the room.
It's really a message for the mayor. You can watch the big picture.
What a bitch. Wow.
Yes. But listen to the rest of us.
Message for them.
We are a definition of nation of immigrants. To disregard the human dignity of those who may be detained in this facility is to forget our own roots and history. Yes, we understand that water revenue is a factor. And if that's our only leverage, it must be used with care. Any revenue gain is commonly at the cost of human suffering and it's also blood money. We can and must do better, not just for the sake of our reputation, but for the kind of community we claim and want to save. Thank you.
Ian Davis?
Good evening. G-A-Y-E, Davis, D-A-B-I-S. I had several things I wanted to discuss tonight. But after today's events, I kinda had to back out a little bit. What concerns me is, I've heard a lot of people sit and talk about their community and how they don't wanna see things change. While we kinda went to sleep a couple of years ago, maybe ten, fifteen, twenty. And things have changed dramatically in our community. It used to be that, growing up, there were businesses downtown. People were, took pride in their, their homes, their buildings. We didn't have the abandoned buildings. We didn't have the missing property owners that are being taken advantage of by people breaking in and vandalizing. We didn't worry as business owners about, you know, being able to speak out and, and having the fear repercussions. I spent a lot of money trying to improve a property on Seventh Street. Because I felt it was important for this community, for the visibility of what we're trying to show, that we're progressive, that we're a community that cares. Only to have people in broad daylight try to steal me blind and then break out those new windows. Wake up, people. This community has got to wake up. We have got to start supporting everyone. Support your neighbors. Support your businesses. Support the police officers that are up against it in this community. I don't know whether you realize it or not, but it has been lawless for almost ten years. They are fighting an uphill battle. You have responsibility as city council people to support those. To give them the tools to make a difference. Your urban renewal authority is talking about tearing down buildings. Let's get her done. Let's get some pride back in this community. Not only do we need to support the businesses, but we need to support those mainstays that have been here for a really long time in spite of everything. And I'm referring to the hospital.
You have three votes. You have to finish.
Okay? All I ask is that tonight you have an opportunity to support the hospital in the best interest of this community. I ask that you do that for the community and I ask that you continue to do the support for everyone else involved in this police fight.
I believe this council has done more to get the police going than everything else.
I, I understand that, but we need to continue in that vein. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Tucker?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I am Stephanie Tucker. I am a resident of Walzenburg. I would like to read the letter to the editor who published the paper representing the Friday protest group. We respectfully voice your outrage at the possibility of an ICE detention center coming to our very own backyard. We are speaking of American County Correctional Center, uh, I can find my exit forty-nine. The recent activity in and around the prison has increased as well as the city council requesting that the roads be cleared and water lines be made accessible. Work trucks and vehicles continue to be visible on the property. We were speaking, circulating rumors, the media is reporting that CoreCivic may require a contract for a private ICE detention center. Any amount of revenue is not worth the possible consequences that might come along with ICE. THI or, uh, any federal agencies entering and operating within our community. The community member should not have to live in fear of being harassed or targeted because of the skin color or their accents. As ICE has repeatedly shown throughout the nation. They have shown no concern for rights. All they are seeking is to reach their voters. Recent national publicized events show that there is no respect for anyone in these raids that are trying to gather up supposed human beings. No, they are human beings, excuse me. Detainments of multiple public officials, refusing to show ID, wearing masks, no judicial warrants being issued. Invasions happening at the wrong address. Expulsion of infants and minors, U.S. citizens, to other countries they've never seen. The U.S. Constitution states clearly that due process is afforded to every person within our borders. Not only does that make that very clear, ICE has shown the willingness to desecrate the most sacred document in our country. We should not be complacent in this desecration. I would also like to point out on my own personal comments, every single one of us in this room is either a mother, a child, a grandfather, a niece. Someone that you love. How would you like them to be treated the way that other human beings are being treated daily? That have been contributing members of our communities, they've taken labor upon their backs.
I think this is up in the issue statement.
I just please, get back to the humanity of where this company was established on. Violence we're seeing taking place all around our community is being, like, enamored, excuse me, it's being rewarded. And if that's what we want our community turned into, a military state, I will not stand for it.
Thank you. Lakota Connell?
My name is Lakota Sutran. Proud men from our proud people, but we are like in spirit, blood and blood. My family, sisters, children, violent enslavement, survival, and erase troops. They fled Nazi fascism to get revenge, but our question owns what lies not hatred. From Jim Crow to Hitler to Israel back, the global systemic violence crisis. IDF has trained U.S. police forces and tactics tested on innocent oxen since the early two thousands. The IDF is ICE. Now even our local rural governments want to normalize moments that have pleased ancestors and the ancestors. I've lived in Southern Colorado for five years in Waltenburg, New York, and I love its land, people and history. My work caring for the vulnerable, I tried in my efforts to give voice to the voiceless. Immigrants built Ortona County, it's mainly an orphaned county to honor them, and their legacy of resisting greed and abuse is gone. We reject the proposed concentration camp. It won't help us in our city financially and it will not be tolerated. CoreCivic has a record of abuse already like ICE, and we pay the prices for it once before. Enclosed as it is currently still renowned, Mayor Vazani invited to grab officers at a police force and now ICE. All while filming or filling his pockets and booking in name of an apparently unmasked god. Yet statistically immigrants contribute far more than the cost of economy. Seventy-two percent have no fire criminal history and many suffer or die on the same late campus. Alligator elk causes estimated to cost four hundred fifty million a year. Colorado can spend up to eighty-one thousand per inmate annually. This facility, as it already stands, positively costs us approximately twelve million for seven hundred fifty inmates a year. But we all know it will be more. Meanwhile, billions are already being stolen from social programs, lifelines that Waltenburg families rely on. Lost tourism, strained trade and broken alliances prove this world leads only to financial ruin and the cost of blood. Mayor Vazani too swore to defend our laws and constitution. If he and others fail to safeguard people within our city limits by way of our most basic of fundamental rights, amendments four, five, six, fourteen and fifteen, as well as for self admitted financial corruption regarding these facilities, then maybe you have no business being in any office and should resign. It is a lie that all you people cannot do anything to stop this. Might I remind everyone, it's never appropriate to gamble with the lives of others for money, contrary to macro political beliefs. We all can, should and must do something. I think our town can be known for so much more than this. We will keep protesting for justice and law, local or overseas, my name is the people and our indigenous peoples are the true human beings of these lands. As white settlers are immigrants. I seek to build a modern race. No one is illegal on stolen land. We reject Nazi designs, unimaginable to be racist and cruel money grab on Waltenburg citizens' reputation. We reject him as mayor as this does not represent all of the legal people in Ortona County. Donald ICE and the IDF, Tom Trump and the debt to the traitors, bring America empty policy.
Hi, Reece Connell? It's Kerry. Kerry, okay.
Good evening, everyone. Let's speak the truth loud enough to shout in the silence. What happened, what's happening in Waltenburg isn't just corrupt, it's fascist. It's a blueprint for authoritarianism wrapped in barbed wire and dressed up as local revival. CoreCivic, one of America's largest private prison profiteers, wants to reopen the same failed facility that bankrupted our town. They want it, they want to turn it into an ICE detention center and as if that weren't enough, they're pushing for a second site, another soft sided facility to cage human beings for profit. Let me be absolutely clear, detention centers like these are filled through masked ICE raids, snatching up people from their homes, workplaces and communities, often with no warning, no court orders and no regard for constitutional rights. This is kidnapping under the veil of enforcement. What follows is not justice, it's indefinite detention, it's due process thrown away, thrown to the wayside, a dumpster fire that is the current state of America. Many detainees are held without access to lawyers, without timely hearings, without even knowing when or if they will be released. That is unconstitutional, that is un-American, that is fascist. And right here in Waltenburg, Mayor Vazani is ready to sign off on it all. If they're ready, we're ready tomorrow, he said. Ready for what? To hand over our sovereignty to a corporation riddled with lawsuits and human rights violations? Meanwhile, nearly half our police department has history of criminal charges, firings and misconduct. These people, we're empowering as CoreCivic extends its reach? What do you think happens when unchecked local power merges with federal force and corporate muscle? It becomes a machine, a violent one with no brakes and no accountability. This isn't about safety, it's about control. This isn't about safety, it's about control. It's about locking up the marginalized to build financial pipelines, authoritarianism at the local level, and if we stay quiet, it will bury us. We are not here to speak pawns, we are not here to trade our dignity for death, or empty prisons. This is our line in the sand, because justice means fighting for our neighbor. It means defending the Constitution, not watching it get steamrolled for profit. And every time we speak out, we reclaim what this system tries to erase, our humanity. Thank you.
I'd like to speak about CoreCivic. My mother was born in Satedman in nineteen thirty-nine. I'm a first generation Holocaust survivor. Some of my family didn't survive the Holocaust. I know what a Nazi is. I got pictures of Elon Musk Nazi salute, Steve Bannon Nazi salute, ICE director Tom Homan Nazi salute, Donald Trump Nazi salute. I was born on a day that I wasn't born yesterday. Walks like a Nazi and quacks like a Nazi, it's a Nazi. You said this was a godsend. I'd like to know what god you worship. This is a terrible idea. Of the million things that Walthamburg could do to improve our economy, you stuck a pin in concentration. I'm telling you this right now.
I'll respond to your mayor comments, I don't respond.
It's my turn.
But you keep asking me questions.
This happens. I don't want to answer you, but if this happens, we will find out who works there. We will identify them to the public and we will speak to it, that they know they are not welcome here.
Get her hair.
I can't read his name, I think it's Charles Meese, is that?
Chelsea.
Chelsea? Chelsea Meese?
My dad's Charles. I said my dad's Charles. All right, hello. I know this is the first time I've spoken in front of you guys, I've been up in this room for a couple months now. So what a full room to be in, people who disagree with you, Mr. Mayor, for people that you represent, look at the people who disagree. Come to find out not everybody's willing to sell their soul for a book, okay? So why be in a position of leadership if you're not actually going to lead or do the job ahead of you? Due diligence seems to elude you all completely. However, it begs the question, why do we like being poor? Why does this county like being poor? I know I'm new here, I know I don't speak on home rule here, however, it's one of the poorest counties in the entire state, and that seems to be the thing that you're proud of. That seems to be the thing that you want to continue instead of progress. So, just a fun fact for everybody, at one point in my life, I actually wanted to be an ICE agent. I went to school, got a bachelor's degree in criminology to work against human trafficking for ICE. Come to find out, conscience comes to you eventually. So, in that time, you learned a few things. One, prisons are built based off a third grade test board, so this isn't a new thing. I don't completely blame you, but you continue it. Also, private prisons employ less individuals than public prisons, often because of different things such as less staff, not having the ability to operate correctly, and the city won't get a fraction of the income of the millions, if not billions, that this brings in. Do you have a decision to stand on making either economic development or detriment here? And since we don't know how to do economic development here, I'll give you a few ways other old towns have. So small business incubators and coworking spaces have worked in places like Salida, we are actually building that here right now. Tourism focused, worked in Lake City, Leadville, Alamosa, gosh, they're doing great over there right now. Street revitalization, which we are working on, there has been news reports, which is great, I see you counted down that time. Many of them can be grant funded and honestly, better Wi-Fi is also a contributor to economic development. So we don't need an ICE prison, we just need better ideas here. So pride was brought up, are we going to be proud of our small businesses, are we going to run them out of town for an ICE facility? So this entire conversation would not be happening if this were a year ago, if this were a normal prison, but we all know what this is based on. This is based on racism and fear of black and brown people. So how about we stand up, you are supposed to be leaders of this city, yet you throw your hands up in the air and say that there's nothing you can do? That's a sign of weakness, not leadership. To do it solely for profit is inhumane and at the expense of the consequences of people who you won't even get to experience it because you won't be living long enough to do so, is pathetic. So if you think what is happening here, or what is happening in Aurora in L.A. can't happen here, you severely underestimate the rest of Colorado and how they're willing to show up. So I suggest you use your words wisely in the press from now on, but beyond this county, you can take care of it.
Carmen Lara.
Carmen Lara, I'm here to talk about a couple of things. First of all, the revenue to expenditures. I can't remember. Oh, sorry. We still don't really know how much revenue we have, so it's hard to compare them, but expenditures, rough estimate so far for salaries up to May, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand dollars, which is a lot, and all the paid invoices show two-point-eight million dollars. So the city has already spent three-point-seven million dollars last year when we spent about four-point-two according to the reports, so we're in bad shape right now. Hiring policies. Okay, we've had our city administrator hiring a lot of people without job descriptions. And that is, according to the twenty-eighteen handbook, the employee handbook, which is the newest handbook that was approved, the city will maintain the written job description for all paid positions. When new positions are created through expansion or reorganization, written job descriptions will be prepared by the administrator and approved by city council prior to filling a position. We have had about six new positions that have no job descriptions, but they have contracts and city council is the only one who can approve contracts. So that's a huge problem, you need to get your city administrator under control. Okay, Mr. Sarpey is again on the agenda after council said we're going to wait, so I don't know what happened there. I'd like to quickly talk about ICE and the prison because I think it's a bad idea and I know you say you don't have any control, but you do have some. So whether you defend your community or not, it's looking very good. And Mr. Mayor, you are not supposed to be saying things to your city administrator because you could get into a lot of trouble for what you keep saying on TV, it's in the policy, but I don't have time to do that. Okay, so remember, this country is for the people. Okay, that includes us and immigrants because even the Bible says that you have to take care of the foreigners because they were once foreigners too. So we're all kind of foreigners unless, you know, you're indigenous and you were born here, which my ancestors were partly, and part of them also came from Mexico legally and worked in the coal mines and worked in the fields to get food for everybody, you know, like sugar beans and all that kind of stuff. So you have to remember, that's really important because without people such as this, when people keep saying, I mean, they're not criminals, some of them are, those that are criminals need to be deported, they shouldn't be here for sure. But you can't deport everybody. So these people contribute to the communities, they put food on your table and roof your house and do a lot of jobs that other people don't do. So I think you should maybe think about what's going on and maybe support your community a little bit better. Thank you.
Emei Sandoval, seventy-one oh five Asher Heights, Colorado Springs, ten-ten West Twenty-seventh Street, Budlow, three-eighteen Kansas Avenue, Walthamburg, and copper today out in Napville. All that addresses, so that everyone's clear of where I live, since that seems to be an issue. Good evening, council chief. Mr. Inorn, city administrator, co-owner, thank you for letting me speak. This is a godsend. I was so disappointed to hear that direct quote from you, Mayor Vazani, when you were being interviewed about the concentration camp being proposed in Ortono County. Your hubris in those interviews needs to be checked. This fell into the lap of Ortono County, unfortunately. It was nothing that any of you, any of county commissioners, anyone in economic development, anyone in downtown business revitalization came upon. This fell into your lap, so there's nothing to gloat about here. I am not sure what god you serve as the higher power, but the one I serve is not a god of imprisoning people because of their color and worthiness. You are a registered Democrat according to the voter rolls. Have you read, seen, watched the reaction to what is going on in this country in respect to these concentration death camps from the Democratic leaders? Surely you are a dyno because your political leaning does not represent your voter affiliation. The treatment of individuals in these facilities has raised significant ethical and humanitarian questions. Reports of overcrowding, inadequate medical care, and lack of access to legal representation are just some of the concerns these humans face. These conditions affect the physical and mental well-being of these humans. Are there no such things as human rights or justice any longer in this country? We just say ICE will take care of it, as you did, Mr. Stafford? Who are going to be the gatekeepers to ensure these humans live in acceptable conditions? Other than just collecting revenue, as it seemed to be your focus, Mayor, when speaking with those interviewing you, are you going to ask hard questions about the care and living conditions of the humans, or did you truly mean that you don't care what it's used for as long as the money comes in? Have each of you researched how communities feel about having concentration camps? Okay, I'm going to wrap it up with this to city administrator. Once again, we get finance reports that mean nothing. Providing reports with GL account numbers and dollar amounts means nothing to anyone. We don't have detailed information. The aging report, what's the point? Clean up the reports, you have aging balances from six years ago that nobody's working on. I volunteered to do all of this for free. Free labor, is it something the city considers? I put my application in, I hope I get a call.
Fourteenth Amendment, Section One decrees, "No state shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." As a subdivision of the state, city officials have duty under the Constitution to uphold those words, and I will repeat them. Nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. The framers of the Constitution deliberately made a distinction between person and citizen, and the courts have repeatedly upheld that intention in cases such as Reno v. Flores in nineteen ninety-three, in which Justice Scalia wrote, "It is well established that the Fifth Amendment entitles immigrants to due process of law." Any claim or legal action by federal, state, or local representatives that immigrants, documented or undocumented, are not entitled to due process of law is ludicrous and a gross miscarriage of justice. Our elected local representatives swore and oath to uphold the Constitution and therefore should not be complicit with any organization, person, or process that works against it. ICE, in its operations, has repeatedly been found to be in violation of multiple parts of the Constitution, especially that of denying due process to people. And I stress people, because immigrants, documented or otherwise, are people. They are not nameless, faceless numbers on a spreadsheet or someone's boogeyman. They are living, breathing people just like you and I with families, hopes, and dreams. Therefore, to be in cooperation with or to be seeking cooperation with that organization goes against the oath our representatives swore. Our commissioners stated recently, and I quote, "We don't have any power over it whatsoever in regards to turning the empty prison into an ICE detention center." If that is true, then why have our county commissioners and the Walthamburg officials taken actions and made statements that prepare for and persuade a contract in ICE? Walthamburg Mayor Vazani stated, "They're going to do it somewhere, we might as well take advantage of it." These are the values we uphold as a nation, ignore human and constitutional rights violations, they're going to happen anyway, so we might as well make a few bucks off of it. That is not what I was raised and educated to believe this country should be. No matter what great thing you think you're building, there is no solid ground on the wrong side of history and blood money is blood money. The words inscribed at the feet of Lady Liberty say, "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless, the tempest toss to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door." Nowhere in that poem does it say send them so we can bury them in bureaucracy for years, then hunt them down, imprison them without due process, and send them back to where they came from and back to the dangers they were fleeing. Do the words of that revered poem even mean anything anymore? Have we become so comfortable in our arrogance and wrapped up in our bureaucracy and greed that we have forgotten our humanity? Or is it just hate of the other? Thank you.
Thank you, to the opportunity to be here. My name is Ron Booth, I'm not a resident of this community or even this county. I live up in Westminster. But I am a very proud citizen of the state of Colorado, the United States, and above all else, in my heart, I'm proud to be an uphold of the Constitution of this United States and all of that means. Nowhere in that Constitution does it say that the protections embodied therein are exclusively for citizens of the United States, but for people in our territories and under its jurisdiction. I cannot pretend to tell you how shocked I was to hear the mayor's remarks the other day. I can only say it has total disregard for the Constitution, the histories of this country and everything that it needs, but disregard for the fact that Colorado has the notorious reputation of being home to a concentration camp known as Camp Alachi. Either you're ignorant to this, or else you're complicit. I mean, I cannot imagine there's a person in this room who's not heard of the many, many travesties to the Constitution of due process that have been committed by ICE and then to stand in front of the people of this state and say, "I don't care who ends up there, I don't care how they get there, it doesn't matter." It reeks, it reeks of the Germans who loaded Jews on the boxcars, not giving a damn where those boxcars went, not caring what happened once they arrived. Do you understand that right now in El Salvador, more concentration camps like eight citizens of the United States have already been sent to, that we had to go through the pains of helping get them back here because they were sent there illegally? You understand that the supposed criminals, they're supposedly such a threat, that most of those people who are going into ICE facilities right now have never committed a crime in their life, pose no threat to these United States of America, no matter how much that guy in the White House sits there and says, "There's a national emergency." guy in the White House sits there and says, "There's a national emergency." And if you believe that, you would have believed every word that came out of Adolf Hitler's mouth. And I don't think you're that dumb. I just don't think you'd bother to inform yourself as to what's going on in this world beyond the limits of this city and what open that facility as a detention center means. I'd like to point out, I have a whole lot of white privilege. I am a white guy, right? But I point out that most of the people sitting on this council, most of the people in this room, most of the people in this community, and in every community across this country, there's a lot of people with brown skin. And if they happen to speak with a Hispanic accent, if they happen to speak to each other in their native tongue, they are at risk of being swept off the streets. And if they aren't fortunate enough to have somebody on the outside to advocate for them, they could end up there, they could end up in El Salvador with no due process whatsoever. And damn you, if you're gonna stay in there and say there's nothing you can do about it, there's something every person has to do about it.
I don't think he's done.
I gotta follow him. I'm Ellen Buckley, I can't follow him. That was perfect. Mayor, City Council, when I saw you on the news and heard what you said, I was so shocked and appalled at your complete, complete lack of consideration for the actual human beings that will be in that prison, and they will be illegally swept up and chucked in there with no due process, for private profit, private profit. Think about what we do at the beginning of this meeting. We all stood up, we pledged allegiance to our flag, and in there we say, "For liberty and justice for all." Who's the "all" here? It's not the brown people that are getting swept up by criminals. It's not those folks. I want you to think about, you're going to be, after this, you're gonna be introducing the America Two-Fifty, Colorado One-Fifty proclamation to celebrate our, our state and our country's birthdays. And this, this is a super thing, and you talk in here about the proclamation, about our shared history. Our shared history is immigration. To stand up and say, "I'm a hairy tin hair or wolf skin, Mayor, as if they weren't people, is beyond the pale." Look at my shirt. This says, "Fight fascism." We have fascism going on right now in this country, and you support it with your statements. It is time for you, as Council and Mayor, to stand up and say, "We don't support illegal, disgusting sweeps of human beings and imprisoning them for committing no crime. It's despicable." And I cannot believe you said that. And that's really all I have to say, except this country was built on immigrants, and to criminalize them is absurd.
They are being oppressed.
What the hell? Get yourself educated. Quick, dabble in the bullshit that comes out of Washington.
Have a process that works, Mary.
You should apologize.
That was so rude.
What you're saying is uncalled.
No, you're rude.
We're standing up to this country. We're standing up to the Constitution. We're standing on the right side of history, and you're laying down like a lapdog.
You work for us. You are supposed to be our representative. You work for us.
I'll give my statement to the com, uh, mayor's comments.
Then wait for this. You keep saying that, but you keep interrupting people.
Because they keep interrupting me.
It's the truth.
You don't even know your job.
Or your constituents.
Your attitude of sitting up there, struggling, and rolling, rolling your eyes tells everybody in this room, you don't give a shit.
The yawning boredom.
You saw that too? Yeah, okay. I took note of it.
The S-S-W-E-L-L. I'm gonna do this by ear because I had no intention of speaking tonight, but I am. I will start off with sitting here watching the facial expressions of some of the members up on the dais, and the disdain that's showing on your faces for the issues that are being brought to your attention is just as despicable and disappointing as your comments were in your interview. Smile on your face, willing to say that it's okay for you to make a profit on the battles of human beings, hardworking human beings, illegal or not, okay? Less than two percent of the people that are being taken and disappeared have criminal records. These are people that came over here, they have families. You can shake your head if you want to. The stats are out there. Do your homework like I'm doing mine, okay? Thank you. The very fact that you think it's okay, you might not have anything to be able to do with that, but the second one, you will have a say-so in whether or not it actually comes here or not, just as the county does, and I pointed that out to them this morning as well. So your actions will speak a lot louder than any of your words can. The next thing I want to know, because it was mentioned that there will be full compliance for anything that is asked, I would like to know if the city of Walthamburg has a two-eighty-seven G actively in process of being reviewed and approved, or if they have plans on submitting them because of wanting to be able to comply with anything that is asked of our public, police permit, okay? But just like she showed you, Trail of Tears, Native Americans that were marched out of their lands, out of their homes, many died, and they're doing it again, but they're doing it to indigenous Mexicans, okay? If you're okay with that, every single one of you, just like every single one of us, your ancestors came from somewhere. They didn't just go poof and they came here. They were immigrants just like anybody else, illegal, legal, whatever. And the very fact that you're okay when people need snatch from their families is disrespectful. You, you represent every single one of us. You're supposed to fight for us, okay? I say it's okay to make a protest off of my relatives, my people, whatever. Mi raza, mi gente, mi corazón. This was our land before it was anybody else's.
Blair Stutzman.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
I was, my name is Blair Stutzman. Did you all get my email, City Council members? Okay, so I'm the chairman of the Northland Steering Committee along with being a partner in Ventures Six-One-Seven-One LLC. Ventures Six-One-Seven-One's attorney, Claire Havelga, presented to the City Council, sitting as the GID board, on February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. At the time, at that time, we requested a full accounting of the GID budget from two-thousand-seventeen and identification of outstanding indebtedness to the GID with the amount broken down by individual landowners. We have not heard back from the City Council or the GID board. We will continue this request for full accounting and ask that the city provide Northland P-F, the pledges, and the city portion of the capital improvement tax that is supposed to be put in the budget every year since two-thousand-seventeen in the table below that we, that we sent you in the email. This will help us determine the health of the GID contributions to meet the WSPPA obligation. I want to believe that it is as important for the city of Walthamburg to collect owed debts as it is to me to pay them. I've been asking for this to County for the last six years or more. Ventures and others agree that the city is bordering on negligence and breach of agreement with the GID over the WSPPA agreement. We were told Todd would start working on this, on this, this past May, that didn't happen. Can you please give us a date that you will have these finances for us tonight? I'd like to have a date. Can we say sixty days, ninety days, six months?
We, we have, we just got them via email today from the accountants that I, I, we're gonna make sure we can forward them, but I'm sure we can probably tomorrow.
So you got all of them?
Well, we got all we can get. They're worried about twenty-four is not getting audited. They don't guarantee the twenty-four number. But up from seventeen to twenty-four, they do.
For the GID?
Yeah, we'll give you that tomorrow.
Blair, in response to the email I sent to Todd.
Everyone have a good evening.
Did you hear me, Blair? I said I called up on that email and I got a response from Todd, but you're coming to Mayor, and so he'll send those to you. We asked, we can do that. He said yes, and we'll get those out to you.
Okay, is that good enough?
I think Blair is off, man.
Thank you.
Aaron DeShaver?
Aaron?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to make everyone aware and put it on public record that if you called dispatch on the Fourth of July, your phone number, possibly your name, and your address have been posted on tonight's agenda on the city website. For those that didn't even want to give their name, their phone number in a quick Google search shows their name and their address. I have a hard time with that. The police chief and his officers want to make this community feel safe. Exposing that information does the opposite. Furthermore, the political propaganda posted in the chief's office is even more alarming, and it goes along with the narrative of tonight's meeting. That's all I got. I, I'm just shocked that you guys would publish that.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica Wade?
Uh, can you guys hear me okay? I'm finally getting cold.
Yes, we got it. I hear you.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Wade. I did not realize that this was gonna be such a full meeting tonight, and I feel like that says a whole lot. I've never seen so many people attend in the meetings that I would attend, and I don't even attend every meeting. I do have to say I'm a little bit shocked with some of the stuff that I'm hearing tonight, and I want to fact-check that before I speak on it, but the bottom line is that I go to Commerce City to visit my family. I know that's where you came from, Mayor, and somewhere in there, we have to kind of read between the lines and think, what is the best for our community? I understand we have to make the hard decisions, and because I don't have all those facts, like I said, I will speak at the next meeting, but I wouldn't like to put that out there. I would also like to ask these, what has been discussed, done, or planned since I stood in front of you guys weeks ago and talked about my house flooding as well as seventeen others in Walthamburg community? Because now I have mushrooms growing in my basement, I have walls collapsing, and I have unsafe living conditions, and I'm still being told, oh, oh, oh. I had somebody else come out here for water testing that had different levels of chlorine than what I've been being told since April. My house is still not completely dry. The bathtub is not pumping, but the water is still raising, so I'm not the only one. What is the plan here?
I brought it up to the ditch company. They were gonna stand on the premise that they were there first. They said you should make your basement waterproof.
It's not a ditch company.
It was possible for you to do the ditch, but possibly if we ever got a lot of money or a grant, we could possibly seal the ditch. That's the only solution. It was all coming from the number five ditch.
Mayor, I apologize here to if I'm speaking out of turn, but it's, I don't believe it's a ditch. I have gone and knocked on over thirty doors in this neighborhood. I have gone and done research with the previous owners that owned this house, and there's been no problem, none. The fact that the water is still coming in is a problem. The ditch was closed, the ground's still taking on water. I've heard, oh, this used to be a lake. Okay, cool. How come the last ten years, people that have lived here have not had any flooding? I've looked into water supply in my house. The water that's coming into my house is fluorinated. It is city water, and we have an outside of the office, a sober tester, who is the only gentleman that's been honest to me and giving me actual figures. And you guys can reach out to him. I can send an email. I wrote your email down a few meetings ago. If you would please provide that again, I will definitely send you all the documentation I have. But I'm tired of being pushed off. I am tired of being pushed off. I pay my bills, I try to build up this community as well as anybody else. I realize I've only been here for two years. I have a childhood here. My grandpa lived here. I've seen what Walthamburg has done to a certain extent, even from a child to an adult. I don't know all the facts as a child, but I've seen it, and I just sit here and think, why? Why? Nowhere else has this happened to me like this.
We're not gonna forget about you. But that's a complicated situation sometimes, and mind out where it's coming from.
Yeah, I forgot.
It kind of coincided with the running of the ditch. You got a lot, quite a few days for that run. We need each other that ditch to finally settle out. This year it run more than the normal, so the ditch is a culprit. We will retest to see if. It's chlorinated water, how could it be? It's not tainted. Do you have an answer? She just said it was.
Yeah, it was tested. How many were in it?
That says chlorine.
Were you listening?
He doesn't.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You're gonna have to tell up here to the function. We'll do this one quick and then get over to the next one.
He doesn't listen very well.
But it has been an issue going on. At the time when she come before, it was not chlorinated water, right?
It has been chlorinated water this whole time. These come from my, my birthwater was closed.
Okay, I, you asked me to ask the guy from the city. I'm asking him, would you listen, please?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, so we had Colorado water dumped out, and he believed, he said it was natural ditch water that came in. He did test the chlorine. Also, he tested the chlorine, his recommendations to me that it was natural chlorine. So he did this retest, looked this one out with a person on our outside to give it an R, and his results were actually even higher than ours, which he said he believes it was natural chlorine. So we've done leak detection on State Street three times so far, have not found ditch water, it's on Main Line, and we've been running the ditch, which is continuing to run from January to July. That's not ever happened in the last forty years that I, I remember. So the C-bitch is still in several rest. So I don't know about the Thursday that Miss Wade contacted, but I know the C-bitch that fifth and Main, that's a community bank, is still going on, and every month they come to dig her business. I talked to Miss Wade a week ago. She said she wasn't pumping. I went into her house, I took photographs, I have all the documentation, and I filed it with our insurance company. That's all we're at. So we have, we have followed up with it, we are trying.
I'm sorry, Mayor. It was two weeks ago that he was in my house. If you guys recall, a month ago, the City Council meeting, somebody asked about that water by the bar, and forgive me that I'm not remembering the name of it, and Mr. David stood up and said, "Oh, that's not related." But yet, when you drive down that alley and you see that the alley was collapsing because of the amount of water, there is still a problem. And like I said, this, you guys, I can understand being patient. I've been patient. My house has been flooding since April, April. This is now July. We were told in May.
We got a busy agenda tonight. We are looking at it, we haven't ignored you. It's just not an easy fix. We do not know where it's coming from.
But if it was your house, would that expectation be the same understanding?
Exactly, exactly, Gary. Fuck the people.
I have people coming out and testing, and they told me I'm testing, and then when the gentleman comes out and tests, and he says, "No, I was not here three weeks ago." I have written everything down, because this situation has made me feel inadequate, and I'm not inadequate. I thank you for your time. I will look up your email, I will send you the documentation I have, and if I could have a meeting possibly, I will look into that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, we are looking at it.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to talk Karen Hoster.
Who is it?
Can you hear me? Karen.
Can you hear me? Karen Hoster.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, yeah. Um, I would just like to know where we stand on looking into the multi-users for the extra charges for billing. Um, housing has the board just reading on, and I tried to keep my mind green no matter how I tried, pretty good than paying, and all our homeowners around here, individual homeowners, are paying a lot more. So where do we stand on charging the extra charges to other users who are receiving the same water as my house?
Mr. Stewell's out of town this week. He postponed it till our next meeting. He's supposed to have another presentation.
Pass the one.
Uh, months, years? What are we talking about? I know, so is this the town of this prison that I be using the same water? Are they in the city limits?
Yes.
Okay, so that, where do you believe us? Why do you think we have so many houses for sale here right now? I pay almost eight hundred dollars a month a year just to have the same water in somebody in housing. I, it's, it's not right. It's, it's just not fair. I have ten people in my neighborhood, but it's only one person living in the house. Why are they anything penalized in somebody in housing, and we don't have two people there? And they're not paying towards the debt. I didn't cause the debt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Testing my microphone. Can you hear me?
Seven. Robert Elfrid, Robert Elfrid's first next.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Finally, I was playing around the computer. Finally got it working. Okay, hi, good evening. So I have one question, but boy, let go of that, it does numbers or comments. My original question would be, uh, when can we speak citizens on public part of the range? Um, now, or can we wait till it actually comes up like letter K?
Public what?
On the agenda, letter K.
That's gonna get postponed to the next meeting. We're gonna just, it was just information that they wanna put one, and that's all. Just to let everybody know it's out there, and then council can talk to people, and by next meeting, he'll have some details. There's not gonna be nothing tonight on that.
Understood, I got you now, Mayor. So I'll just stay with my things or, uh, I didn't, I had no clue what was said earlier today, 'cause I was at work. I missed a lot of things. So private prisons are a cancer on the soul of this country. Uh, I have thought that way a long time, and still think that way now. I have been to concentration camps, you know. What I see happening looks like we're heading in that direction again, if we're not there already. I am not affiliated with any political party, but I do vote. My grandfather took me to those concentration camps. He was Catholic. Uh, he wants me to, he wanted me to remember, sort of history does not repeat itself. It looks like we are repeating itself. I would like to quote a friend of mine who was a mayor of Boot Creek, Colorado, resident of Walsenburg, who passed away. He was a Democrat. He said, we Democrats can start buying more bullets. God bless him, we made his whole rest. Illegal immigrants, they pay sales tax every time they buy something. One way to make an illegal immigrant legal is make it easier for them to do the process. My grandparents, they did it legally. They came over on a seven forty-seven. They were blessed and privileged. So those are my thoughts. That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven, six, five, forty-seven, nine, nine, three. That identify yourself. Who is that? Are you there?
Yeah, my name is JD.
JD, what's JD? Who's JD?
That's my name, JD.
Okay, go ahead.
So, uh, just to kind of change gears a little, uh, Mayor, no offense to you, but you seem to be violating your own Colorado by statute of eight, nine, one oh eight, which would be disrupting a meeting, a public meeting. When the public speaks this, most people will speak three minutes uninterrupted. That means by you, which would make the chief of police actually has the ability to arrest your act for interrupting people. Secondly, I would like to know from the chief what he intends to arrest me for when I come into that goddamn town hall, in that police station, and break out my camera and stop recording everyone you clown? Because clearly you guys don't understand that we can record you in the, in the course of your duty. It's case law, it's Supreme Court case law, and I can't believe that your attorney hasn't advised you about that. Those signs better come down. I'm telling you right now, that I guarantee you, we're gonna channel them, every one of them. And I can tell you right now, there is no way that you guys are gonna stand up to the civil liabilities that's gonna fall upon every one of you. You've been made aware that those signs are illegal, you know they are illegal. You should have never put them up, ever. The fact that the people should have been out there turning around and putting terrors in your face, when you guys were turning around and making deals with your best friends, giving them water deals, would probably have been in the position that you're in, which is probably why they're trying to turn around and turn that, that prison into the ice museum. I mean, give me a break here. You guys are trying to make up for money that you lost. And now you're turning to do it on the back of other people. It's a disgrace. Every one of you should be ashamed of yourself. And those people that are in the audience, thank God you guys turned down tonight. You guys are God sent. And you, what you should be doing, people, is doing more open records requests, because had you been doing the open record requests, these clowns that are sitting up there on that dais wouldn't be doing the shit that they're doing by giving their friends and family special deals on water, turning around and having, getting money for skateparks that are closed, getting money for waterpots that are useless.
Yeah.
Every one of you. And Chief, I'm waiting for my answer. What are you gonna arrest me for?
This is a citizens' comment session. There's no answer question.
It ain't stopped, it ain't stopped yet all tonight. You ain't shut your mouth yet.
And they have that friggin clown that's taken over by the woman, which I can't handle, by the way. Taking pictures, telling us that we can't do it. Well, what are you gonna arrest me for, Chief? Open your mouth. Your clown, that bad stick up your outside with. You're a jerk.
Yep, thanks for the answer, Chief.
Presentation.
No, you already called this person.
No, I'm sorry, I missed one.
My name is Samuel Valdez. I'm from Lille, Colorado. Uh, if I may, I have a direct question for the mayor. I'm not sure what her name was, but she said this was the most people she has seen at a meeting for a long time. Does that make you feel? About ten people have stood up and made statements, three minutes each. They've all said plenty of things that I know you've been listening to because I've been watching your schedule. Does that make you feel? Do you feel anything? Do you feel anger? Do you feel confusion? Do you feel like maybe you wanna do something, go home, do some research, and empower people? Do you feel like maybe you are letting people down? Do you feel shame? Do you feel anything?
I'll comment under mayor's comments.
I'm not your zero, you have a family. I'm born in zero's life. And I'm actually bringing a message to you from him. He could not be here, he's never died last night. His mother, he played with your relatives. Your family comes from Cordell. Your family came after his family had completed. Your family of immigrants crocaded and played with my mother-in-law as children when you were accepted into that community that was already established. You come from immigrants crocading to make a better life in this country. And my husband wants to remind you of that. Gordon says, Jerry, remember. And what would your grandmother say? What would your great-grandmother say if they knew what you were doing in our family?
Shameful look, okay. Sorry for passing through. But yeah, we used to walk down to their house, we'd write the church.
Yes. As an immigrant family accepted into a community established.
Did I ask you what your last name was?
You said?
Jenna? You gotta come up here, nobody can hear.
Uh, my name is Jenna Fox, J-E-N-M-A-F-O-X. I really didn't watch, I'm gonna cancel it for a second tonight. Um, I thought it was gonna be different. Yeah, I'm really sorry that thugs have broken that good windows in your business. I wish to have these people who are here with support. Come on, buddy.
We do. We do.
He do.
We do. We do. But anyway. No, you said, really, it's like he interrupted. You don't need to interrupt me. I would like to say thank you. I would like to thank you for your strong leadership, all of you. You guys have really attacked. Thank you, Chief, for being here. We need a police department. I don't think police have usually ever really liked someone a lot. It's usually, you know, a lot. Nearly getting pulled over or doing something that you shouldn't be doing. So not everybody in this community believes like this at all. Most of us don't wanna get up and say what we wanna say, because we don't wanna get our windows broken. Excuse me. We don't wanna get our windows broken, and we don't wanna be sabotaged, and we don't wanna have our children harassed. So I'm not a fan of city council, or not a fan or a member fan, it doesn't really matter. You guys have really withstood a lot of the harsher. Thank you very much. Thank you. You weren't complaining about that. Well, God, you were, Jenna. I was waiting to report, Mr. I was. Okay. Just pointing out the truth.
We're done. Mr. Sapi, you wanna change the tone here?
Uh, I, I wanted to speak, sir.
Nobody told me you were on there. I can't see that far.
Oh.
There was no hand, so I didn't.
Oh, well, I, I'm on the Zoom conference call. My name's Virginia Gillespie. I had my hand raised. Hi.
We'll let you, they will go on.
Oh, that's okay. No, my hand had been raised probably for the last hour, but I was driving through, um, hands free, driving through, um, zones. They kept dropping the call. Thank you for taking my comment. Um, I appreciate all of you being willing to hear us. Um, I live in unincorporated, um, Walsenburg, so I live in Mid-County, and I wanted to echo the concerns of the other attendees about this Core Civic facility. I think, I think that it's ill-advised, all of the human rights violations. There's other ways to bring dollars to the county, to the city, that could be a lot more positive. I'm a nurse practitioner. I'm concerned about the loss of funding for Spanish Peaks. Very concerned about the loss of services for folks that really need whatever human services have been available. So when I think about what I see in Walsenburg, the positive, I'm sorry to hear about what's happened to the businesses. It's, it's a shame, because I relocated from Denver in 2015, but it would be great to see a more positive direction started and not have that disrupted with such a negative. Course Civic has a terrible history, and I know I've been learning a lot by different people posting about the history of basically slave labor. Really, to be frank, that's what this comes down to. So, um, I appreciate you listening, and I wanted to put that out there. There are other ways to bring money in. Let's see if a, a positive labor source, maybe Costco, could be an anchor. People could come up from New Mexico. They could come down from Pueblo. There are other ways. And so, thank you. That's basically what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys for having me at the meeting tonight. My name is Russell Sarpy. I'm the owner of the Virgin Personal Solutions, the automated speed camera system. Uh, it's my understanding that you guys have executed the agreement and you let it proceed forward with the services, and I'm just here to thank you, just kind of give you a direction where I'm recommending that we do two orientations before we go live. You actually should be in the phase of public awareness notifications to the public, so that you can, you know, your social media, send out to the news media to let them know that you guys are fixing to proceed with focused enforcement. This will be done in certain areas of town. Uh, prior to going live, I would recommend, I had a, an orientation about a month ago, I think, uh, with some of the staff, uh, from the police department and from the municipal government, kind of gave them an overview of everything, but I would recommend another orientation, and then I highly recommend that I come to a workshop where I can address the council members and fully explain to you guys the processes and how the whole entire system works, that you're not left out of knowing how the system works. So that's my recommendations to you guys. My job as owner of the company is to make sure that, uh, everything is compliant with the law before we are taking on issuing out citations to the enforcement, uh, and that you guys fully understand the policies and procedures that Chief Adelli is, you know, enacting for you guys, for the system. So I'm here today to answer any questions that you guys may ask. Things free?
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna.
Yes, sir.
That's the first thing.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, I think if the police, the chief, the police force are happy with it, but I'm not sure. And you doing the billing for us? How did we?
That's gonna be my question. How's billing work?
So billing is, uh, it's, we invoice for services rendered, and which is, which is in the agreement, uh, which is why I would like to have a work session to fully explain that in, in, in lay terms to you guys, right?
So that's clear. How do people who have a violation get billed?
It's again, we're gonna set up policy and procedure. Uh, there's two types of ways that pay, well, there's three types of ways that payments can be made, and some of these are options that municipal, but online payment services with credit card and electronic checks, obviously you can set up where people can come by the municipality and make a payment. Obviously, cash is a, is a offering that you can accept, or a personal check, or some type of, uh, certified check.
So I'm not worried how people actually physically pay, but I get, I'm saying, is this something that's expected to go through our control system? Because if it is expected to go through the loan system, city currently works. I think we're way before, before, Sarah. It requires way before.
No, ma'am. Our, our system that we provide for services has everything contained in the system for that for auditing, for.
So this, so these departments, the primary billing department, to collect speech fees?
Again, I don't know the answer to that. I've never had the police department run its own billing system.
That's what I'm saying. And for this to run through our current utility billing system?
No, ma'am. Let's set up, let's set up this presentation.
So you'll pay an annual contract to handle the billing for the city?
No, it's not using Cessio for your billing. You're using Express Bill Pay, but it's independent of what you currently have. We, we will not let Express Bill Pay enter into the same agreement that you have with Express Bill Pay to accommodate the, the current, uh, processes that you do for utilities, core processes or whatnot. You will interact, enter into a new agreement with Express Bill Pay specifically for the camera citation. There's separated from all your other, uh, billing activities.
Do you have anything ready?
Well, that is part of the process before I allow you to go live. It's what the other municipalities are using with the system like that.
I, I just, it's not you, it's our system.
No, I, I completely understand, and that's why I would much rather sit down together in an environment like a work session that you guys have. Just give me some dates where I can attend it, uh, and then we can fully go over everything. Just give me some dates where I can attend it and then we can fully go over everything. I can actually show you in the software, how other municipalities are set up, how they're using Express Bill Pay, independent of Caisel, through the normal processes that you guys have, and just lay all that out there. It's actually a due diligence that we're demanding that we do because you don't want to be three months down the road and you guys are not fully understanding what has been implemented. And we want to bring the council into this as much as the, the leaders in municipal government, like the deputy leads and the clerks and the billing department and all that stuff.
If you do like next Tuesday, we'll do a finance meeting and list together. The fourth Tuesday, that's like our finance too.
That's, not this Tuesday coming, but the following Tuesday.
Next one? Is it like next Tuesday?
It would be next Tuesday. I'd have to check, check my schedule. I, I can coordinate that, Chief, and let you guys know. What other dates would you have beyond the Tuesday?
Uh, we'd have to decide what everybody's doing. We kind of got that one set outside already.
I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to adhere to that.
We, we don't take citizens' comments on presentations. We're gonna move on, move on to the meeting. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Sapi?
Unless you guys have any questions for me.
When? I see it's on postgo. So we've done started doing advertising part, right? Yeah. Do you have the equipment yet? So you're, we need to let people know how soon this is gonna happen.
So if I plan to briefly simply do a left floor house, like before online, can you do like a brief overview of what it is, what the agreement is, how it works, how the officers use it, how it gets charged, what they're after? Just brief overview.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll just explain what is automated or photodynamic speeding enforcement. Automated photodynamic speeding enforcement, the way that we're deploying this at Walsenburg. The police department would be issued a handheld LiDAR camera system. This camera system is able to be deployed on roadways within the jurisdiction of Walsenburg. If the officers are using it, they're setting the parameters within the LiDAR gun. What this does is where an officer can only initiate a certain number of traffic stops with a certain period of time, like an hour's time, they may can only do five or six traffic stops in that time period. It's less effective at changing the behavior of speeders. So the technology using a camera with the LiDAR system is able for an officer to go out there with the camera. And if a hundred speeders come through the jurisdiction with the officer is monitoring and manning the, uh, the system, it will pick up all hundred of those violators in that time period. So what that means is you're interacting more with the public to change their behavior. The fines are less expensive than if an officer executed the traffic stop and issued you a handwritten ticket. The fines are regulated by Colorado state law. The fines are regulated at forty dollars a citation that's issued versus a hundred and something dollar ticket if they give you a handwritten ticket. The fines do not go against any points against your driving record and you have the ability to, your due process to contest the citation. The law specifically advises that the registered owner is the responsible person for the violation. So it doesn't matter if your child was driving, you let your friend borrow the vehicle. You can apply for transfer liability by indicating that this was my nephew driving or this was my wife driving. So there's rules and regulations that are governed by Colorado state law that helps enforce it and provides the due process for the citizens of, of the, of the community. Just to give you an example, our system is in the town of Hudson, Colorado. We've been there for about nine months and just to give you an overview. We track everything that's, the data within the system, like to monitor the reduction of speeding, how many people from the community is speeding based on zip codes by the registered owner. It's really good data to show that of the large amount of citations that were issued in that jurisdiction, that there were only two hundred and twenty people that was from the town of Hudson that has been issued tickets. In the past few months, there's been actually zero and most of the people that are being issued tickets. And, and the other thing is tickets are only issued for excessive speeding. You have to be going a minimum of ten over the posted speed limit. So if you're in a thirty mile an hour zone and you're doing twelve, fifteen over the posted speed limit, you're going to get a ticket for excessive speeding. So it's not something to generate revenue. It's not something that's been designed to issue a ticket for going one, two, three, or five over the posted speed limit.
There's no practice here hardly ever. What it means is not to generate revenue. That's what we ask.
Well, that's your opinion.
Oh, that's a fact.
There's no accident.
Or is the accident right now?
I asked him to explain. It wasn't a comment.
You know the reason, but that's, that's what it is.
I mean, it's not true.
If the video made available to ICE for secondary purposes?
For who?
To ICE.
To ICE?
Denver has, Denver city has decided to not fulfill that, not renew the contract because ICE can request that video. So if you have video in the case, then that video that can be.
Be probably correct.
Just wanted to say.
This debate will not go anywhere. He was asked to give the presentation and give that information to everybody. Just accept it, do with it what you want, but that's all this.
So again, the, the whole system would be governed and overseen by the police department. The funds that are coming in would be managed by city government where the funds would be coming in there. How the funds is dispersed, we have nothing. My company actually does not even touch with dispersing funds. We use a provider called Express Bill Pay, which is already being, uh, the town government for that. It's a great system regardless of what some biases that are towards it. We have at least a fifty percent success rate in changing the behavior of speeders wherever this is launched at. There's national statistics that show that this has been around and first started in Arizona. Just the existence of it and it will change the behavior you will feel on your roadway that people are slowing down and paying attention because it is making their behavior change, so.
You just said you don't know if it makes them safer or not.
So I have a couple of questions. Seven questions. So who owns the video and how long is the video?
It's up to you guys, so that's.
So the city of Walsenburg?
Public information.
I would say that the agreement is executed through you guys, is managed by the police department. Police department, the work of you guys to come up with policy and procedures in regards to, the data belongs to you guys. All we do is organize and maintain so that we can automate the processes for you guys.
Public information.
It's all maintained in the system where the chief would have access and whoever he determines should have access will have access to it.
Whoever this council says should have access.
Like on camera?
This agreement was put on hold last meeting. How did the contract get signed?
Yeah.
They do what they want.
Yeah.
I'll look into that.
There was too much to take care of when you say.
It's so bad. It's so bad. I've never seen anything like this.
And he just looked at it for good.
Yeah. I thought we did. Uh, there is an extra Tuesday this month, so if you can't do the twenty second, let's move to the twenty ninth. Move our financials to the last.
Twenty, I already know the twenty ninth is going to be better for me.
With the twenty ninth. Push it to the twenty ninth.
And I will let you, I still have to check my schedule, but I just got to know that twenty ninth probably.
Council have any other questions? We'll figure out the twenty ninth sometime.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for asking that.
Any match is unfinished business? Can entertain a motion?
I never heard how that got approved when it was tabled. This is. Who's he?
Whisper.
I got a motion by Tom Martinez, the segment of discussion that Veronica May, discussion.
So first of all, I think this is a terrible idea. City of Walsburg, voters remember, have term of stay on three times. And at that time, we had the city clerk who is probably going to fit and the voter said no. So I'm not sure why whoever thought of this thinks it could go through again. I want to understand that obviously this will be on the ballot in November, but somebody can run for these positions during this election.
Because you have to honor that election.
That's what I'm asking. So, so, so people come and get your ballots for any of these positions that are open. Come and get one for the quick to, and I believe that voters will follow what they don't want. I just don't understand why. Have a question?
This is ordinance. We do take questions and answers.
Okay, so first of all.
Step up to the podium, thank you. People can't hear you on Zoom.
That's fine. See, my sandal, Walsburg, Colorado Springs.
We know.
Okay. So which seats are up on city council? Can we have clarification of that?
The mayor's every two years, son. Every two years.
There's a seat everywhere.
It's a state, one state, each ward.
So whose, whose seats are up?
The main mayor.
So.
Nick Rick, Veronica May.
So Nick, you're, are you off council or you're running again?
I'll be off.
You'll be off?
Sure.
And Veronica? You can run again.
Could run again.
And?
And I can run again.
And you can run again. And Donigan Stafford and Fred are on the floor. Okay. So the city clerk and treasurer, you have to be a citizen to run for that?
You have to be a registered voter.
A registered voter? That's it?
You have to be a registered.
You have to be a registered voter and a citizen for a year. Okay. Prior to. All right, and, um, what are, what is the pay, what is the salary of city clerk and city treasurer?
I think it's a hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty. I think it's a hundred and fifty and fifty.
Hundred and fifty a month.
Hundred and fifty a month for both?
I think it's a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty, it becomes two hundred.
I'm sorry.
I think it's a hundred and fifty for clerk and fifty for treasurer.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
I just think the biggest issue is that we had a city employee who had this position. And people were confused that that was her job, that wasn't her job, that was her lucky position, completely separate from it. I'm not saying that a city employee shouldn't run for it, but I'm just saying I think that there was a separation of those duties. And I think if we had what, what we should have now doing this, that we could have very good city clerk. That's my letter. It's my opinion.
And to be the devil's advocate a little bit, just there are two sides to the coin. If you get a real good city clerk or treasurer, they're not term limited that way. You can have them for a long time. So there's two ways to look at it.
Well, I, I think the problem is that the city clerk and treasurer hasn't been held accountable, just like all of us have. They have not been held to their duties. People of last election, if you remember, suggested that those job descriptions be reviewed and they never have been reviewed later.
Well, since they were appointed, you have a little more authority than.
You should still, you have a job description as mayor. I have a job description as city council, so a clerk and treasurer also.
Anyway, that's why I saw you.
You don't get to.
Was terminated, so we had went six months without one.
Were they terminated from their clerk and treasurer position? Okay, so I just want to be clear. That was not what they were terminated from.
They're talking about the ones that are stealing all the water money?
So there doesn't have to be a recall for them?
They just said that they're not.
If you're gonna.
They're not really fired.
If we're gonna put somebody else.
Anybody catch up?
Have another election or put somebody, but we just.
Chose.
So far now, we're just gonna wait to this election.
So they're still there, never been recalled. We're just gonna wait for the next election. Anybody catch up? Anybody?
Carmen Lara, L A R A. Okay, so the appointed positions couldn't get passed. So the previous, a pre, a previous city council created Mr. Colander's position so that they could keep a deputy clerk and then elected city clerk. One of the biggest issues is, of course, it couldn't get passed, so they created Mr. Colander's position. The second thing is, as Ms. Councilmember May is saying, the job descriptions are not being followed at all. So I have said this before, if you want a deputy clerk, a city clerk and a treasurer, you need to review those job descriptions before this goes to election, if it gets passed at all, so that you can have the people performing the correct job duties. So Mr. Colander wasn't supposed to take care of the recall. It was the city clerk according to the job description. So that was a big group. And there are a lot of things that are happening and of course you don't have a city clerk right now, so Mr. Colander's playing both roles. But you need to consider all of that because those job descriptions and last attorney Vera said you should review the job descriptions way back, what, a year, two years ago? And nobody wanted to do it. So now you've got a new election with new things happening. You need to review those job descriptions.
So just further clarification, so I'm saying obviously the city clerk and city treasurer, so they allow one person to run for both of those positions. So is this ordinance saying that you were gonna have an appointed city clerk and an appointed city treasurer? Or are those being combined? If those are being combined, then is there other things that we need to be legal these things to have?
I understand it could be one person who's appointed, who's going to point out, we just say this day, the election, you can run for both. So I think somebody could run to be appointed or, or separate.
We don't private.
No, but I mean, you put in a letter and a jet, I mean, just put in your vote, so.
Well, and I just think.
One person if you wanted to.
You know, the city of Walsenburg, I believe, has eight city council people, major way of war. So we continue to get away from elected officials by impact.
Mm-hmm.
Most places do it because of population. We get so low, we get cut down on the percentage.
And I hear that and I understand that, but why are we gonna cut these positions?
We're not cutting them. We're just moving them from elected to appointed.
And you're not allowed the people.
That's right. Take it from the people, all right, man? We know your decision's making. Thanks, Veronica. Appreciate it.
Ralph Stover.
Yes.
Nick Wee.
Yes.
Fred Ecker.
Yes.
Don Martinez.
Yes.
Veronica May.
No, because I want people to people.
Harry and Don.
Yes.
Who's security?
Thanks, Veronica.
Rick Jenny is online?
I believe he is.
Rick Jenny?
I think his name. It was there.
Rick, are you there?
I am.
I'm having trouble hearing you guys on scene.
Yeah. Sir. The, the, you can't hear it. It's terrible.
Can you hear us now or no?
I can hear you now.
Now, we just took the votes on the approval of creating the ordinance 205. Did you hear all the discussions?
Uh, I heard the discussion up until the end. It started breaking up really bad.
Do you feel qualified to vote on it?
Uh, yeah, I, I think I do.
Okay. Mr. Colander, would you take your vote? Rick Jenny?
Uh, no.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. We the people.
This is the one for us first.
Oh.
Here's the next one.
Okay.
I guess, okay. America 250 Colorado 150 proclamation for local governments. Whereas the year 2026 marks the 250th anniversary of signing the particulars of the amendments. Whereas the year 2026 marks Colorado's 150th anniversary of statehood. And whereas the city of Walsenburg founded in 1873 has contributed proudly and significantly to the history of our nation and our state for more than a hundred and twenty years. And whereas in 2016, the United States Congress established by joint resolution, the America 250 Commission to encourage observance of 250 years of our nation's existence. And whereas the Colorado Legislature established the America 250 Colorado 150 Commission with the passage of 2022 dash 011. And the commission has determined its mission and purpose is to celebrate Colorado by its own completeness of our shared history. Honor that which makes Colorado the unit that strives for.
Honor that which makes Colorado unique and strive for a more perfect union. And whereas it is appropriate that the city of Walsenburg engages fully with our past and looks toward a shared future. And whereas the mayor and city council of Walsenburg thus encourages citizens to curate and participate in programs that will commemorate the history of our city, our state and our nation. And now therefore be resolved that I, Gary Benzani, mayor, the hereby proclaimed the city of Walsenburg will fully engage in commemorative activities leading up to and during the commission's stated length of observance. July 15, 2025 through December 31, 2026. I urge all community members to take advantage of the resources available from the America 250 Commission, the America 250 Colorado 150 Commission and the city of Walsenburg to observe the semi quintennial anniversary by coordinating commemorative events, planning historic activities, providing opportunities for public disclosure, creating new scholarships around Colorado's complete history, creating new educational opportunities, and by seeking opportunities for historic preservation, the city of Walsenburg pledges to uplift support and generate commemorative opportunities. Proclaimed July 15, 2025.
I guess I'll entertain it. Looks like we have to.
There's something to make motion. Motion to approve the America 250 Colorado 150 proclamation for 2025.
I got a motion to Don Martinez to decide if I make videos, discussion? Roll call.
Veronica May.
Yes.
Gary Benzani.
Yes.
Nick Vehill.
Yes.
Don Martinez.
Yes.
Ricky Jennings? Ricky?
Yes.
Fred Eckert?
Yes.
Ronald Stafford?
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Okay, now the next one, I think, figure out.
I left my glasses in the car, so I might not be able to read this too well.
You're not gonna make me read another one, are you?
No. I'd like to introduce my coworker, Brad, Brad Meyer. Did you say it right?
Right Meyer.
Right Meyer. Almost right, but I'm from Brooklyn. I'd like to add a little levity to tonight because I'm sorry it got so intense here. And I am thanking all of you for having me here, and I know everything is very intense right now. But I'm a purveyor of art and culture, so sometimes I'm a little bit above the fray. And with this proclamation comes the responsibility to share what we're doing at the Museum of Friends. And the biggest thing we're doing is we're sharing information. So as we learn about opportunities that are available to the whole county, not just to some nonprofits, we will be sharing that. And I thank you for agreeing to the proclamation for the city, and I hope you'll agree for the proclamation for the Museum of Friends. Next, this Thursday, which is the 17th, two days from now, between 3:00 and 4:30 at the Museum of Friends, we're hosting a program with History Colorado and Katie Roach, who's the program director for this program. Heather Hernandez, who was here last meeting with me, to discuss something else that I forgot now, but it was a meeting where she was introduced, we were both at the conference for Colorado Creative Industries, which is the Arts Council. It was originally called, they changed it to that, because art equals economic opportunity. I heard a lot here tonight about what we could do for economics, and I am a strong believer that tourism is our future here. And as a matter of fact, NPR did a program on us, and it was called Was the History of Walsenburg? But Art Is Fueling Its Future. And I believe that. And I believe that we all could come together because this is a small community, and I see you all, and I want to be friends with everybody. And I know it's difficult right now. So I'm just hoping that we can all somehow get to the point, right? Brad and I don't agree on a lot, but we talk to each other, you know, politically, you know, but we try to maintain a civil way. And I hope, you know, I'm a tiny person, that I could promote this idea that it's only through communication. And the programs we're gonna be doing at the museum have to do with educating our youth to become civically engaged and vote and have a voice. Because that's where we're gonna change this place, is by educating our youth. And these last few years, it's been very difficult with the school system. I know we have a new superintendent coming. So I'm praying and hoping that we can change that ap- 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 um, ap- apathy, apathy. I'm past my bedtime. I go to bed at 7:30, so.
Got it.
Apathy. Because I think that the children need to have a voice, and we should start including them in these meetings like they did in New York City. Because that's how we're gonna get people to start communicating. We are very proud of this program, and we're very proud of being here for 20 years now. It's 20 years that we're here with the Museum of Friends. And I appreciate all of your support. I know you on different levels, not just, you know, politicians. And we appreciate everything. And please come to this event next week. It's not next week, it's Thursday, Maria. Thursday, the 17th, between 3:00 and 4:30. You know us, we'll have coffee, we'll have something to make it nice. And we'll be discussing what the grants are out there, because there are grants. And there are opportunities for all of us to be involved. But mostly I'm looking for a coalition of young people who have a voice to understand that children are our future. And if we want things to change here, we have to change the educational ap- 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 apathy.
Yes.
Apathy. Because there are so many programs downtown that they don't come to. This Saturday, we're having the Makers Convention at the Community Center. Who are the kids who are coming? I don't have a list. We don't have an RSVP. You know, I don't know how things can get done unless we have commitment. So please come to the mu, if you don't know where the Museum of Friends is.
No.
It's Sixth and Main, and we'll be there from 3:00 to 4:30. And Saturday, we'll be at the Community Center from what time?
Oh, I didn't write that down.
I think it's 10:00 to 4:00.
Yeah, 10:00 to 4:00. There's gonna be, we collaborated with the Wheelhouse Maker Space, the Fox Theater, and the library. And this is the second annual one. Last time we had it with each different groups, so you traveled and we thought more bang for our buck, we would have it in one location. So it'd be easier for people to go to. And then they're gonna have VR headsets from the Fox, so you can do stuff like that. There's gonna be.
Except if you have kids.
You know, teaching certain, you know, we have a lineup of people that are gonna be there for crafts.
Steen, solid science, technology, engineering, art and math.
Yeah, like she said.
Can I ask a que, could she ask a question?
A few times, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
So I just have a question for you, because I've been seeing for the last couple of days, you say you've been here 23 years?
20 years.
20 years. So there's a commercial or an ad going around about the revitalization of Walsenburg? And it only mentions two businesses.
Oh, we've been here since '05.
Right, well, I understand that. So do you know why, like, your business, Serendipity, Armitas, TCs? They're promoting Walsenburg, but they're promoting two businesses?
Well, this is a discussion for another day, because I don't want to go negative or dark, but we're left out of the lot. And we're left out of a lot of opportunities. And I don't know about the ad. But I am, I am promoting this 250, 150, because there was a chance that we were gonna be left out. Because some community members were saying they were the only ones, but they weren't. That was not true.
Two businesses being promoted. I kind of disappointed.
Could you email that to me and I'll look into it?
It's right on Facebook.
So, so just to end on a positive note, we're into inclusivity, which means we like everybody. I don't care what your politics are. But we do want you to visit the museum because we are the number one tourist attraction on TripAdvisor in Google. And we are known throughout the United States. So the fact that we're here in Walsenburg is really a gift to Walsenburg. And it's something we're very proud of. Everyone who works there is very proud. And we want to instill that with the children to be proud of Walsenburg. So there, the water park, everything everyone said, I'm right on board. We need to get together and make changes. So, but it's only through communicating, not being nasty. Thank you. And I'm not a politician, but Mayor?
You sound like one.
I know. Mayor, may I get the proclamation from you? When do you sign it and when may we get it?
I'll read it to make it official. I think we have to read it and then council has to vote on it.
Okay. Should we sit down now or stand?
Yes, you can sit down. The first proclamation was. This one's America 250 Colorado 150 proclamation for agencies and institutions. Whereas the year 2026 marks the 250th anniversary of the signing of the regulations of the amendments. And whereas the year 2026 marks Colorado's 150th anniversary of statehood. And whereas in 2016, as this Congress established by joint resolution, the America 250 Commission to encourage observance of the 250 years of our nation's existence. And whereas the Colorado Legislature established the America 250 Colorado 150 Commission with the passage of Senate Bill 2022-011. And the commission has determined that its mission and purpose is to celebrate Colorado by the quality and completeness of our shared history. Honor that which makes Colorado unique and strive for a more perfect union. Whereas Museum of Friends established in 2005 and has been in existence continuously since that time. And whereas Museum of Friends has contributed proudly and significantly to our community and our state for more than 20 years. And whereas it is appropriate that Museum of Friends engages fully with our past and looks toward a shared future. And whereas the Museum of Friends thus encourages the creation and participation in programs that will commence, commemorate the history of our city, our state and our nation. Now therefore, the Board of Directors commits to publicizing the history and contributions of Museum of Friends. We will engage in honoring more commemorative activities heading up to and during the commission's stated length of observance. July 15, 2025 through December 31, 2026, proclaimed July 15, 2025. I have a motion to approve. Are you on Commerce first?
I have a motion to approve the America 250 Colorado 150 proclamation for agencies and institutions.
I got a motion by Don Martinez, second by Nick Vehill. Any comments? Roll call.
Ricky Jennings?
Yes.
Don Martinez?
Yes.
Fred Eckert?
Yes.
Nick Vehill?
Yes.
Ronald Stafford?
Yes.
Gary Benzani?
Yes.
Veronica May?
Approval of IGA between Warren County and the city of Walsenburg oriented elections for 2025. We have the encloser, I believe it's a formality, the county clerk runs our election, I have several questions, please, all about.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do you hear me?
Mr. Hyatt, go ahead, yes.
Uh, I was out of town for a couple of days, so I didn't have a chance to read this until recently. But if you take a look at paragraph five, which is on page four, at the bottom of the page, it requires that this be adopted, the agreement be approved by resolution or ordinance. And we don't have a resolution or ordinance before you. Now, I don't know what the timeline is to accept this agreement, maybe Mr. Colander does. But you really, you really need to have the res, you really need to approve this by resolution or by ordinance in order to be compliant with language in the agreement.
So, will we have time?
Yeah, you will. So resolution could be the media, so we'll get that done on the.
Can we go out with that thing?
Yeah, we'll have time. We do have our resolution. So, Mr. Hyatt, I understood resolution would suffice?
Yes.
Okay. We can do that in one meeting then?
Yes.
Uh, let's move on. Uh, I announced earlier the discussion of gun range property in Warren County. Mr. Carlos Follier got together with me, they looked at the ranch that a bit of the city owns. And just in the talking states, they're curious, I know they talked to the chief and sheriff's been involved a little bit. Colorado passed a law to get concealed carry now, you gotta have a nap tip. You gotta have to certify on an actual range now to get your thing. So a real range is more, is more needed now, and commissioners think it's needed. So I'd like, it'll be a presentation next meeting, the council will just start rolling that around, think about it.
Are we talking purchase, weeds, what are we talking?
Just started, I guess. Whatever, they're willing to work and however it works out. They would like to buy it to be sure that they would indicate anything.
I mean, if we're talking purchase, it'd be nice to make even value.
I brought it up to see if you guys are interested to start. If you're interested, then we'll meet again. So we'll, you'll be on the agenda next meeting, and have more of a presentation, maybe all of us can feel out what's there. I, we need to talk to the, I got the water engineer in the attorney to see what, if it's on that property, what we really can do with that property, or if you think for that, it's still a part of the water conservation. Anyway, that's come up, that'll be next time. That time will be, that's cool. Uh, the next one is the approval of right of way, the Lois Bradley and the grant to take care of the hazardous waste and stuff for the old dry cleaners and the old hospital that burned. Whoever's doing it has some time, they're coming in pretty quick. They want to know if we can give them an adhesion, they need some testing, they got some soil testing in an alley south of there, so it'd be seven to eight. And if they test positive, then they go to the next block now. So they need some kind of adhesion, and there's three things in the, our ordinances that they have to supply, some kind of insurance and blah, 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 so.
So we have nothing in writing?
Uh.
I mean, I would love to have something to look at, to know exactly what they're looking for.
So we have to wait, it's, they come up like last Friday, they don't have it right, so I got some email.
So we can't do it when I have it?
They're just hoping to get it done.
So who, so is the, so you take the hospital, you mean the medicine house?
Yes.
So is it a different property owner that owns the hospital versus all the dry cleaners?
Because I understand that.
And the dry cleaner burns you? No?
It's for some, I, I was surprised when she said dry cleaners, but that's one of the ones that we're going to discuss.
Who owns that?
I thought it was some lady, but separate from the one that. But I have to, I'm talking out of turn, I have to, I will get more detail.
Stalker, turn, you show.
And what we really need. Mr. Hyatt, do you want to talk to your head what's required to give somebody an adhesion to do hazardous waste testing?
Uh, I don't know what they would require. I don't know that you really have to give them an adhesion. I think I would take a look at granting them licenses before you should. The licenses of the temporary use of property, whereas issues tend to be permanent.
Yeah, if you don't mind coming up for something, I'll forward you everything I got, put you in contact. I don't really want to hold up cleaning up those places. I'll get you what I got so far. Just come up last Friday.
Mayor?
Yes?
So is, is that at the city's cost?
No, this is a grant, this is the brownfield.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
And it's GeoSynTech. That's who they hired to do the thing. Okay, Mayor, council comments?
Mayor Benzani, was there supposed to be a brownfield grant also for Lathua? Wasn't there discussion about that, getting a brownfield grant for the Lathua meat camp?
They did do it, it was negative. They did do it, it was negative. There's nothing in there, has to be, we've got a copy. Okay, first of all, I appreciate everybody's enthusiasm and passion. Trust me, I, I was born here, I was born in the hospital that burned down. I raised my kids here. And I'm doing this just to try to bring this community better. I do not believe that we have any control over ICE or Corcivic or any of that. I do believe however, to be a little bit combative, that ICE is a, is a federal government arm of agency that do some good things too. I mean, we're, we're just big enough to be the bad guys. There are some positive things they do. Uh, there are a bunch of, there's a bunch of bad people out there. And they didn't come into this country like my, my ancestors did. They come illegally. There's human trafficking, drug trafficking, there's, there's things that need to be cleaned up. Now are they doing it right? I don't know. I can't even fathom.
You should go.
Government's too big.
You shouldn't say that.
What you commented on that? That's what you commented on. What you know and what you don't know is, you can see the bias of where this is going. I'm sorry, but that's, all of a sudden the bad stuff you don't know about, but you know about all the good stuff. Come on.
I agree.
I, I'm explaining my position. I listen to yours, I appreciate yours. But I, I can't believe that they're as bad as you people make one think, but they're not.
We're seeing this video. If you are not paying attention, you should be outraged.
No due process. That's it. Hey, I'm not gonna debate that. I mean, that's a matter of opinion.
You choose to be uninformed, but just be honest. Just be honest. You should be uninformed.
Just like the ladies basement.
Well, full negligence.
I listened to what I wanna listen to, I don't want to pay any attention to this.
That's your choice.
Bias.
Bias.
Your information on, we're looking at the reality of it, the severity of it, and it's already in place.
You've had to say, this is Mayor, council's comment, I give you my opinion, that's all. I'm here to do what's best for Walthamburg. That's all I can say.
And your family.
Right. And your dry basement.
But I don't think that's anybody's opinion. Anybody else in council? Do you want?
Yes, alright, so, I'm sorry I wasn't here on time, I have a, with a, so I wanted to comment and I don't think our administrator is on the meeting. I'm gonna go, um, so a couple of things that I wanted to do. First of all, I wanted to commend Mr. Herrmann for his report. Uh, I really appreciate you updating the sirens, I'm just asking about that, I appreciate you putting that in there. Um, I appreciate you going after the electrical estimates to keep the water plant out of the dark. Uh, hopefully that's something that will be brought to this council soon, so we can improve that. There's a light that up there. We brought up the tarps, fifty to two hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. Are we proposing to do that? Are we gonna do that? I'm just gonna say this, I think it's a shame that we spent ten thousand dollars on fertilizer when we could have put that money toward tarps and got these river systems in the city. But that's just my opinion. The other thing was Herrmann that you put in there was the meters. So here we are again, yet another new set of numbers of meters. So your report showed, from what I can tell, active meters nineteen hundred and seventy-one. That's seventeen oh-eight residential, two hundred sixty-three commercial. But then you have a grand total of twenty-third, so I'm not really sure all the numbers. When the utility commission was working on these rates, as Mr. Stillwell put in his report that he's spending all this time working on rates, what numbers are we working on? Because the numbers that were given there was sixteen hundred and twenty-one meters. So because we did get some form of financials, I kinda just ran those numbers and using the, I used both numbers, I used Mr. Herrmann's numbers that he recently put in his report and I used the numbers that the utility commission is using. And it's about roughly an eighty-six, fourteen percent split between residential and commercial. Take the financial report and you look at the revenues that are in there. Commercial for water are paying about twenty-three percent and residential are paying about seventy-seven percent, where their numbers were split at eighteen, eighty-six, and fourteen. So because of the rates that we enacted in June, commercial are picking up more share now. So I don't think we're clearly looking at these new rates, as I said with last utility commission. I'm not sure what we're doing. What was proposed, what has been proposed, will again put more money on resident, individual residence. What we did last June did take some of that off them. It's clear in these numbers, the sewer, um, is like eighty-two, eighteen split. Numbers don't lie, they're here. I mean, I don't know what else to do. I have volunteered, I have told the commission, I have told Mr. Herrmann, I have told Mr. Stillwell. I would love to run their numbers for you all day long. No one ever takes me up on that. You guys just rammed me down my throat and I have to go through and figure all of this out. So again, I would love to sit down and have this conversation. Um, the other thing is, for six months, we've had great candidates who are gonna apply for a financial job. They're hired, they're almost there, they almost have, we're thinking. And they all back out. And now we have another whole group, now they all back out. Because we're taking too damn long hires, buddy. It's ridiculous. So then we get this in here, all this secrecy. We have a gentleman, I'm talking to a gentleman. Everybody knows who it is, the whole town knows who it is. It's John Volusia. He's said that. So he's stepping in here to do this and that's fine, but I had a personal conversation with him. He said finances aren't his strong suit. So my questions are, what is his experience with Castell? What is his experience with utility billing? Is this an existing position? If it is not an existing position, it has to come back to this council in order to be an existing position. I mentioned this at the last meeting. Our administrator is going out of his authority to hire contract positions that are not positions at the city of Walthamburg, gas supervisor, HR, and now this billing thing. So I don't know. I understand that Joe's not our permanent administrator, but maybe it's time that we actually look for a permanent administrator that's gonna follow what the authority is of our administrator. And the last thing in there?
Financial, is it?
Oh, oh. And so the last thing is that he puts in there about Cora. We've been all this time on Cora. Well, do you know why you're saying all this time on Cora? Because you have no transparency. That's why you're sitting.
None.
That's right.
Zero. Thank you, Ron. Zero. It's like them body cam videos we request from this guy, so. He don't wanna go off them body cams. So they're gonna go into executive session. Hey Chief, how about a tour of your office? You kinda made a face like you didn't have propaganda on your wall. You wanna show the people? Well, we just assumed the lady was right then. Thank you, Miss Base, I appreciate you. Did you learn anything tonight, Gary? Did you learn anything tonight? You're not gonna step on my rights, bud. You did soon as I came in the door.
Oh, yeah, online.
Yeah, I got you, bud. I'll record wherever I go. I'll hold the government officials accountable.
You guys should stay here. We're going, we're going out.
Alright.
They don't wanna show me his office, I asked him. Uh, cause he made a face like he didn't have propaganda in his office or whatever, so. I asked him to show me, but he don't even wanna talk. No. No. All these people came out here tonight, we appreciate them all. I'm gonna get Zoom back out, I guess. Shit. So, we'll, uh... Yeah, the chief don't wanna show me his office, man. I'm gonna get my tripod picture here. About a minute, guys. Yeah, and we'll head out. We'll talk a little more out there. That man's gonna run his office. There I go. You can't record in here. The chief says you can't record in here. So. Alright. Get my picture with the chief here. Right? He won't speak to me, but he's gotta get his picture with me at least, you know? He doesn't have a choice. Hey Chief, you sure you don't wanna show me your office? Hey Chief, you sure you don't wanna show me your office, bud? What about these junk ass signs you got on the wall? When are they gonna come down? Are you gonna arrest all of us for recording? Should do the right thing, chief. You sure you don't wanna give me a tour? And clear that little rumor up? Be that easy, brother?
No.
Isn't that harassment? Arrest him.
Arrest me. It's coming. It's coming. It's coming. What's up, man? This poor cop's arrested. He is arrested. I got him.
Alright, public meeting's over, so you gotta go.
Yeah, no problem, the meeting's over, I'm leaving. You sure you don't wanna give me a tour? Are you sure you don't wanna give me a tour?
Which, which one was it?
We can do a tour. These junk ass signs. Trash, chief.
This is the exit right here. Thank you.
He's tough. You're a piece of shit, you know that, right? I'll continue to expose that. Meeting's over, guys. Hey, he just threw me out of there, just so you guys know, cause of my camera. It's online. Uh, he's throwing her out too. They're discriminating who they're throwing out. I see Mark Craddock's still in there.
Yeah, Mark Craddock's still in there.
Mark Craddock can sit in there. You're a piece of shit, chief, just so you know, fuck you.
One more opinion, one eight.
You're a cocksucker, how about that, bitch?
You are absolutely fantastic blazing yourself.
And like I say, it's pretty funny. You're not bringing Mark Craddock out, are you? I am the press, bitch.
Yeah, standing proud.
Sorry, brother, I didn't mean to bump you.
Always, bitch.
I didn't, hey, bro, I didn't mean to bump you. Have a good night. My chief's still trash, bro, take these signs down. Fuck them. Yeah.
Yeah.
So they didn't do it at all during the meeting?
And they didn't take the Mark Craddock out?
Mark Craddock's still in there with his camera.
So he just got the city a lawsuit. Thanks, chief. Discriminating piece of shit.
That's cause he sucked them all up.
Oh, is it Mark?
I asked him for a tour, guys. I just wanna see his office, all that propaganda I heard he's got on the walls. He didn't wanna show it. He wouldn't even open the door to the office, he was so fucking scared. He's gonna arrest me, it's coming, he said. I told that bitch to arrest me then.
Did he really say that?
Yeah, it's on the live. I did him just like this, hold him in the camera and he told me I'm gonna be arrested if I don't leave. So, I only just need him to tell me. That's all. That's all lawsuit, just the same as this bullshit sign.
Attention city hall visitors, use of any video or audio recording devices in city counted chambers, conference rooms, or other locations.
Chief, you're a bitch! Fuck you, Spinelli!
I told him maybe he should, he could get a contract filming the human rights abuse.
No shit, huh?
And he said, I'll look into that.
Right? Put some cameras up there, huh?
Yeah.
Alright, so that's Walthamburg, Colorado, guys. They do not want you in this public building with cameras because they're a bunch of fucking tyrants. So, if you go all the way back to the beginning of my stream, when I walked into there, the gov, the, the governor of Walthamburg, Vanzani, the one, well, mayor, I guess you could call him. He, uh, thinks he's the governor though. He, uh, tried to get me thrown out right in the beginning. But they don't know who they're fucking with here, cause I, I've been doing this shit for a long time. Wow, the cops are hiding now. I can't film in there, guys, I'm not allowed to. Cause the chief is harassed. Hey, the chief was harassed by me, guys, that shit's hilarious. My camera's harassing him. Aw, she got an escort. That's cute. Hey, I got an escort too. So...
I'll give you an escort any day.
That's right, Diggs. I know you would, bro. I know you would.
Give me an idea. Just not jail, okay? Not yet. Just not jail, that's what I'm doing.
They told me not for recording, bro, can you believe this shit? Hilarious. Hilarious, bro. That piece of shit chief said he's harassed.
Are you coming around to me? Is that what it is? You're starting to like my attitude?
Wait, you, you said that you wanted to come to ride along sometime. So... Yeah, absolutely. Anybody's welcome.
Thanks. You guys have a good night, congratulations on graduating.
The chief says I'm gonna get arrested. Wonder how much that arrest is gonna cost him, guys? I don't think so, he's still in there. Yeah, a bunch of them did. I'm, I'm the only one that has to leave. The rest of them get to stay. About just staying right here in the fucking window and watch inside, just the same. I'm still in there. Still here. Oh, he's looking for Jason, Jason's over here. So those people can stay in there, cause they're not recording. So... Yeah. Yep.
But, uh, we did film, so I do feel.
Lady J was live, if you guys wanna check that out. I think a bunch pulling out right now. Yeah, yeah. Dude, that means it's gonna go forever. Get your permissions. Yeah, Craddock's in there, right? Did they put him on? Yeah, sorry, I'm talking to myself kinda. Don't mind me. Yeah, he's still in there. With his camera, he don't get, he doesn't get thrown out, he can remain in there with his camera. It's just me that gets thrown out and Lady J. Right? Hey brother, you too, man, thanks. So yeah, that camera can stay in there, just not my camera. So... That's why you call discrimination. Weird. Like I could move all around, disrupt the meeting, stand in front of people, and that one's okay. For me asking the chief for a tour of his office. Harassing. He thinks he's gonna arrest me, y'all. That shit could be funny. I told him to arrest me then. I got the threat, that's all I need. You see all those people sitting in there, right? And it's on live, he told me the meeting's done, I have to leave. I'm not saying, uh, you guys got a grievance, but if you did... If you did. Yeah. Just saying. Yeah, the lawyer was in there too, right, on the screen. So. And like I say, discrimination like a motherfucker, dude, you see all these people sitting in here and he tells me I must leave, the meeting's over. And he was hoping I'll resist, I ain't gonna resist him, I got him on life, I don't need to resist him. He's a fucking idiot. Cause I got all the documentation I need, right here, to show. There's the camera. There's all these people that can stay in there. Every last one of them is allowed, except for me. No doubt about it. The chief's gonna catch him with fucking lawsuit. Now, hold on, man. Nah, I can go back inside and record, period, that's what you guys don't understand. You see what I'm saying? You, you done fucked up, you put me out, that's the lawsuit already. You threatened me with arrest for not leaving when all these people stayed in there, including Mark Craddock with the camera. I'm fucking media whether you like it or not. I did six thousand views on this morning's meeting. That's more than Mark Craddock's ever gonna do. You motherfuckers didn't escort him out. You escorted me out on video, you can't say you didn't. You said the meeting's over, I must leave, on camera. Yeah, and I'm notifying you, all those people are in there, that's discrimination. That's it. You already did it. You fucked up, your chief's a piece of shit. He shouldn't be such a pussy bitch, he shouldn't be so harassed. You're a fucking police officer, you can't be harassed. No, that's what you guys don't understand. But I'm, I'm glad I got that threat of arrest and escorted out. Will straighten you fuckers up real quick with that. Yeah, you did. You did, I have it on video. That piece of shit said I'm about to get arrested, and then you guys escorted me out, it's live. Uh, you wasn't there for that, but you helped escort me out of the fucking building. All of you fuckers just fucked up. Sorry, Diggs, you already know, bro. That's a public fucking meeting, I don't belong being escorted out for fucking being me. It's discrimination. It's discrimination. You don't get to throw me out and then tell me I can go back in, that's not how shit works. It's against the law. And again, I'm not bitching at you guys. It was that piece of shit, dude. All cause I asked him, could I see his office to clear up that fucking rumor that just came out, I tried to help you fuckers. There's propaganda all over his wall, show me, motherfucker, you ain't been in there since she said it, show me. How easy is that to dispel the fucking rumor? Instead he's gonna be a pussy fucking bitch? Not talk to me like I'm not fucking human? Fuck him. That's how he's gonna treat the citizens of this town, we'll fucking see how long he lasts here, dude. We ran the last fucking PD out here, what the fuck he thinks different this time? Now, you guys have been doing a lot fucking better, dude. So again, this ain't directed at you guys. This is directed at that piece of shit who's hiding in there, sent you out here to do the fucking man's job. And apologize for his fuck up. If he wants to make this right, he can come fucking apologize to me as goddamn self, how about that? Then maybe I won't fucking sue you motherfuckers for change of fucking behavior, policy and fucking a dime, bitch. You're good, bro. I'm just documenting. That's all. Everybody, everybody in here is okay. I had to leave.
Is that your tripod over there?
Yeah.
I'll need your card too, sir. Well, I, I need your card. No secret policing in, in, uh, Colorado, and I've requested it. And I'm standing here for it.
He'll get it, he'll be back. Throwing me out of a fucking meeting, dude. How'd that work out for him? Then they're gonna come and say, "I'm sorry, you can come back in." No, bitch, you done threw me the fuck out, you're getting sued, how about it? They tried throwing me out when I walked in the fucking room. Yeah, they fucking, they threw me right out. It's called discrimination, chief. You're a piece of shit. Bring your bitch ass out here. Fucking idiots, bro. Hey, does that look like I care? Just saying. Fuck these pigs. They're not gonna play that game with me, y'all. Not having it. These fucking signs can come down, dude, they're trash. That's what's trash. Yeah, no, bro, let me get out your...
They don't let you film.
Yeah, you gotta lie, you gotta lie and make them sound good, otherwise, you know. Appreciate you, Will. Hey, you too, man. Hey, keep, keep up the good behavior, bro, I like it. I like it, like I say, it's him, it's him, not you tonight. Appreciate you.
You too, thank you.
He's just following the chief's orders. He's following the chief's orders, he's got to follow the chief's orders. Chief said I'm harassing him, I'm about to get arrested. And then he says, "Oh, we didn't threaten to arrest you." No, motherfucker, it's on the video. Chief said I'm about to get arrested, because I'm harassing him. I'm harassing him, y'all. And then they're gonna come in and say, "Oh, well, you can come back in, bud, you can come back in, please don't sue us." A little fucking too late, now I gotta attach all their names. Dummies. Yeah, she's interviewing. She's live over there. Feel free to go check her out. I think I'm probably gonna hop off here. I got everything I need, so. Good show, appreciate you guys being in here. It's fun. Love it when people fucking get up there and speak to their fucking government and make themselves known and heard. You know what I mean? Alright, y'all. Try this in Texas. Johnny Keith, uh, go check out my buddy Otto the Watchdog. Can you spell that? Otto the Watchdog? If you can spell that, go check him out. He does that in Texas. Yeah. How about you go do it anywhere, Johnny? Show us. Show us. Those fucking idiots threw me out, dude. Including Diggs. Including Diggs, dude, so now I gotta name them all, bro. Cause the, the chief is harassed. The chief is harassed. Yeah, he's harassed, bro, this is the funniest shit ever. A chief who's harassed. Be safe, brother. Yeah. Poor chief. Poor chief. Even the sheriff thinks that shit's funny, exactly, dude. Poor chief, he's harassed. Oh my. Cause I asked for a tour of his office with all the fucking propaganda on the wall. That's harassing. It's harassing to see the chief's office, guys. Oh no.